Hey, good afternoon to you. 407 here. News Talk 105.9 W M A L where we're making sense of the news. Coming up this hour, Tiffany Polifko, former Loudoun County School Board member reacts to the garbage treatment of parents at the hands of the Loudoun County School Board last night. They just care about the safety of their kids. Tiffany Polifko will give us a sense of what's going on and what needs to happen next. Sean Davis is here at 5 o'clock from The Federalist, reacting to the news that the FBI says they've arrested an Afghan man who planned a terrorist attack right here in the United States on Election Day. Sean weighs in, and you can join us. The government likes to release all sorts of economic reports, which all seem to be in the interest of, you know, trying to soothe your fears about the state of the economy. Most Americans aren't falling for it because they're looking at the state of their own household and their paycheck and how far it goes. And, but one of the big topics that came up early in the Biden administration was, are we in a recession? Is the economy contracting? And you remember that whole debate where they told us that two consecutive quarters of a shrinking economy didn't really mean a recession? That's like, that's only kind of like a dumb person's conception of a recession. There's a very complicated formula we use to establish whether or not we're in a recession, and we're not in a recession. The economy's doing great. Remember that whole thing? Well, let's revisit it now because the experts have taken a much closer look, the actual experts. And, well, I've got some bad news for you. EJ Antoni joins us now. He's economist at the Heritage Foundation and an in-house economist for this show, The Vince Colanay Show. EJ, good to have you back with us.
Vince, thank you so much for having me again.
So you have a critical report on this subject out today. You tell us about, first and foremost, you have a co-author on this, and what have you concluded?
Well, what Peter St. Ange, my co-author, and I concluded essentially is that the economy shrunk much, much more than we previously thought in the first half of 2022. But then after that, Vince, it really hasn't improved. It essentially has kind of bounced around. It's been up, it's been down a little bit, but we still haven't had, again, since the end of 2021, we still haven't even had two consecutive quarters where GDP increased. Now, the reason I can say all this as opposed to what the official data are saying is because we went into, we did a real deep dive into how inflation is calculated in the GDP, the gross domestic product. And we found basically a lot of errors, things that under normal conditions might be fairly accurate representations of inflation, but which under the last few years have not been at all accurate. You know, housing is a really great example of that. The monthly mortgage payment on a median-priced home has more than doubled since the beginning of 2021. But when you look at these official inflation metrics, it's only up about 20%. It's off by a factor of five. So once you factor that in and you realize that so much of what we're counting as an increase in gross domestic product, in other words, an increase in economic, it turns out that's just prices growing up, growing up. It's not more homes being sold, for example. It's not that the homes are larger or nicer or newer. It's literally just an increase in price. It's not an increase in real economic activity.
So, in other words, like, the cost of a home has doubled. If your mortgage doubles, then that's a big deal. And the government had concluded that prices had only risen 20%?
Right, exactly. About 20.9%. But then, once, again, once we start factoring in all of these different ways in which the inflation metrics are undercounting the cost of living increase, now all of a sudden, you know, we arrive at a much larger estimate, almost twice as large, at 39.9%. Now, this is essentially from the first quarter of 2019 all the way through the second quarter of 2024. That's just the most recent data that we have. So this entire report, we go all the way back to the first quarter of 2019, and we say, okay, how has the economy performed since then? And actually, believe it or not, Vince, for a little bit of 2019 and also into 2020, the economy, we think, was doing even better than previously estimated. And that actually continued into the start of 2021. Initially, in the beginning of the Biden administration, the economy was doing better than the official statistics make it appear. But again, that all goes south very, very quickly, beginning in 2022, when inflation kicks in in earnest. Again, not just according to the official measures, but according to the figures that we recalculated based on real-world data.
So the government reports, in other words, are useless for us to understand what's actually happening because the data are rigged as they present these reports. And oftentimes, we've seen, almost every time, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like constantly the government will release a subsequent report, and they claim that last month's data has been revised downward. The economy wasn't doing quite as well, as we told you, last month. How much of this, given your educated judgment on the subject, can we ascribe to malice? In other words, they're just outright rigging the data to try and convince the public of something that's not true? And how much of this is they're just lumbering and slow and incompetent when it comes to giving the public an accurate reflection of their life economically?
Well, I have to be, you know, really, really clear here, Vince. I do not have a smoking gun. I do not have any kind of evidence that there has been any kind of intent to deceive the public, whether it's at the Bureau of Economic Analysis or the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Now, that being said, now that we have the disclaimer out of the way, it was very clear in the beginning of 2022, really in the spring of that year, that there were significant problems with a lot of our economic statistics. You know, that's particularly true in the jobs numbers, and we've talked about that so many times on your show. In fact, more than once, we have gone through a lot of different data and made predictions about what future revisions were going to look like. And those things were right on the nose. And that just goes to show you, not that we have any kind of secret sauce or the magic eight ball, but rather that the problems have been in plain sight, and the Bureau of Labor Statistics have not addressed those problems. Now, there have also been problems at the Bureau of Economic Analysis, which produces these GDP numbers. And part of the problem, part of what's going on here, Vince, is the fact that a lot of the statistical methods, methodologies, et cetera, that are used, that may make sense in normal economic times, do not make sense today. And the fact is that these different metrics are relied on by major decision-makers, from Wall Street to Congress to the Federal Reserve. And at this point, I think all of these government institutions that are producing these now faulty metrics, they owe Congress and the American people an explanation as to why they have done nothing to fix the problems after we are essentially two years into this mess, again, having seen and known that there were such big problems in these statistics. And again, nothing has been done to fix them.
Just from the layman's perspective, from my perspective, it kind of seems like the government is built to track subtle changes in the economy, that if little things change, like the cost of eggs go up a little bit, then they can account for it. But if people are dramatically changing their spending habits in the face of a gigantic fluctuating economy, the government loses track of even how to measure it. Is that right?
Well, that's certainly part of it. You know, but there are also other problems, Vince. You know, I'll give you another example. One of the things that we looked at was regulatory costs. I hear complaints all the time from people about things like their appliances, like their clothes washer or their dishwasher, how the newer appliances just don't get things clean the way they used to. And that's because of all the regulations that say these appliances can only use this very minimal amount of water. And so you have people who literally have to wash their dishes before they even put them into the dishwasher, or they can only do half a load in their clothes washer because otherwise the clothes just don't get cleaned. Well, the product has clearly gotten worse, and it's gotten more expensive because of all the regulations on these appliances, except very often, the way these things get calculated in the national accounting, in other words, how they affect inflation in measures like GDP, is it actually measures as a net zero. In other words, there's no effect because the regulators and the statisticians are assuming that the increase in price matches an increase in quality, which is just a nonsensical assumption. Again, when you're talking about these really big moves that you're describing, but the big moves are what we've seen the last several years. And so all these measures are off by quite a bit.
Yeah, it sure sounds like it. Okay, so that back, I don't even know what time period it was, but early in the Biden administration, when we were having those debates about, are we in a recession? The economy shrunk two quarters in a row? It's your educated assessment that, what, we were definitely in a recession?
I think so. And in fact, I think not only did we enter recession at that point, but it really seems like we have stayed there. And this is particularly true when you start looking at other numbers like disposable personal income. And this, Vince, I think, is a key reason why so many Americans say that they think we're in a recession. It's because that's what's reflected in their personal finances. So essentially, in the beginning of 2022, disposable personal income adjusted for inflation, using our inflation metrics, fell below where it was in the beginning of 2019. So three years later, and the consumer has gone backwards. It is right at about that exact same level today. So even today, the amount of disposable personal income, or rather, what that disposable personal income can actually buy is less than what it was at the start of 2019. So now we are five years later and no progress. In fact, the consumer has gone backwards. So of course, people feel like it's a recession because they can buy less than they could before.
So how much poorer are people now than they were when Joe Biden took office?
It's several thousand dollars, and that's just looking at the official inflation metrics. But again, once you start realizing that these measures are undercounting inflation, you realize that it's several thousand dollars more. So if we just want to look at, let's say, a typical American household, so you have two kids, two adults, both adults working, they have effectively become about $6,000 or $7,000 poorer on an annual basis. In other words, it's as if you knocked $6,000 or $7,000 off of their annual income compared to when Biden and Harris took office. That's how much less they can afford. That's how much less they can buy today.
So is there any precedent for the United States losing this much wealth and spending power over the course of just three and a half years? That's three and a half straight years in which Americans are poorer than they were before the Biden presidency started. It must be a very long time since something like that happened.
We haven't seen this since the Jimmy Carter era, since we had much higher rates of inflation. Now, interestingly, it was right after Jimmy Carter, it really was early in the Reagan administration, that they actually made some of the changes to how they calculated inflation, which we are trying to correct for in this report. Much of what we do is actually simply returning to a previous methodology that more accurately reflects the rapid rise in inflation that we have been seeing. And so it's interesting that you have to go back to that period when you had that very fast rise in prices, that those very high inflation numbers, to find an instance of when Americans were becoming this poor this fast.
Yep, yep. As always, rather than make your life materially better, they'll just lie to you about what's actually happening, use the data to manipulate you. But they can't do that to EJ Antoni. EJ, as always, thank you, sir. Really appreciate this report and your time. The west coast of Florida is really set to get some big water pushed in. The National Weather Service has projections right now for portions of the Gulf Coast, 10 to 15 feet in storm surge between Anna Maria Island and Boca Grand, Florida. And Tampa Bay, they're saying 8 to 12 feet right now. Charlotte Harbor, 8 to 12 feet. These are big. These are very big storm surges that will consume, at the very least, in some cases, the first level of many homes washed so many away. This is a tough storm coming in. Praying for the best here. And I know, I know, just, there's a lot of people who are still in the area. I'll tell you that I've, my parents live down there on that part of Florida, and we were able to, you know, take them in. They're with me right now, thank God. I'm happy about that. But they're waiting with bated breath to see what happens to their community and their home down there in Florida. You know, in our family, we've got a lot of, we're very encouraged, they're very encouraged by Governor Ron DeSantis. They love the governor. Less so with the federal government. Not too pleased about them. We, I think we're going to try and bring in some weather professionals, too, and talk about all of this, you know, stay on top of this storm. I was posting earlier as well, I just posted to X, perhaps you know the answer to this. How many people are still missing from Hurricane Helene? How many people are missing? Right? We've, we've got, you know, we keep getting updated death toll numbers, which are just awful. Hate to see them. 236, according to one death toll, that was from 19 hours ago, CNN reporting that. Those numbers continue to rise. But how many are missing? I actually asked Grok about this. That's Elon Musk's artificial intelligence platform. Because honestly, I was searching the internet for this. I was searching all sorts of news outlets, and they're wildly all over the place. And even Grok was like, yeah, nobody really knows. Nobody knows. What do you mean, nobody knows? And so, and you have to think that with this hurricane, Hurricane Milton coming in, which I'm glad to see that it's a category three right now. That's still a heavy storm, but the reporting is that at the moment, it's a category three with wind speeds of 125 miles per hour. At certain points, while it's been out in the Gulf, it's risen to a category five. And it's, anybody's guess what it's going to be when it arrives. But what happens to all the people who are still trying to pick up the pieces from Hurricane Helene? Does the media move on entirely? Yeah, I think the answer to that is yes. I'm not seeing updated missing persons counts in all of the various news stories on that subject. Now, does the government move on, too? As you have entire communities that have been absolutely buried by that hurricane? We need competence quickly, and we don't have it now. All right. Let's talk also about what's going on in Loudoun County. The parents of Loudoun County outraged by the Loudoun County School Board yet again, this time when it comes to the safety of their kids. Why would you put an MS-13 guy who just got arrested this past year with a gun, threatening to kill a classmate? Why would you put him back in the schools? And why wouldn't you give parents real information about this subject? Tiffany Polifko joins us next with yet more drama out of Loudoun. Hey, good afternoon to you. It's 4:35 here. News Talk 105.9 W M A L where we're making sense of the news. Coming up, Sean Davis will be with us, CEO, co-founder of The Federalist. We talked to him about the FBI announcing they've arrested an Afghan would-be terrorist who wanted to attack the country on Election Day. Sean's got some thoughts on that subject, and you can join us at 888-630-9625, 888-630-WMAL. Loudoun County, Virginia, last night, chaos as parents concerned community members get up during the Loudoun County School Board meeting's public comment period. And they wanted to talk about their concern that there's a student in the system who appears to be connected to MS-13, who was just arrested last year for carrying a gun, as well as threatening to kill one of his classmates. You know, the kind of thing you might be concerned about. And the chairwoman, Melinda Mansfield, well, she had enough. She doesn't like when people are saying things that disagree with her politics, so she shut down the public comment period. Here's some of the audio last night. You'll hear in it an aide to one of the other Loudoun County School Board members, one of the good people, Dina Griffiths, the aide Abby Platt. And it gets disrupted by the chairwoman, Melinda Mansfield.
All this talk about safe storage, which is common sense. I literally don't know a single person that does not support safe storage.
Just to tell people, the Loudoun County School Board is trying to tell parents how to store their guns at home. They think this is their job, is to tell you how to handle your own business.
But where's the protection and the safety for our children who are in school with other children who have known threats, who have been arrested, and who are back in the school? And my daughter's terrified to go to school with him. When are we going to have that conversation? I've not given any personally identifiable information. This child has gone to Great Nighting to show everyone who he is.
Excuse me, just by what you're saying right now is personally identifiable.
Come on, come on!
You are breaking the law. All of these people are here to talk about safe storage. And I want my daughter to be as safe as the guns that you are asking people to keep safe. I want my daughter to be safe at school. I want my son to be safe at school. I have two children that have attended schools where this child has gone. That is terrifying.
Again, one more time. If, one more time, and we're going to have to conclude public comment for you, and thank you.
A warning from the chairwoman. One more piece of audio for you. This is Michael Rivera, who spoke up, saying that the Loudoun County Schools are covering up this MS-13 gang member in the schools. And of course, the school board decides to try and shut them up. Take a listen.
Recently, the local media covered a story where a known gang member with a criminal record that was suspended from LCPF was allowed back to the school. That's a public media. It's a news story, a channel, a news story. This is public information.
I'm sorry that this is.
No, I'm not stopping. I'm not stopping. There are gang charges in LCPF. During the arrest of Ms. Smith, no. But LCPF met up with us to minimize the danger and re-ingrate juvenile criminals to the schools. LCPF would admit there's a problem because it might be affecting their school ratings and ratings. Meanwhile, today, the local chair and her local loyal sycophants have given a warning in Mount Leesburg, which school remains to waste hundreds of thousands to build subway batteries. With regards to guns, the American Academy Act is also based on respectability and passage is a good practice.
Okay, thank you very much for your public comment. We will be ending it for the night. And we will be, and we're going into the.
They're shutting down the whole, the whole public comment period. That's what they did. All right. For more on this, let's bring in a woman who had to suffer all of this before. She was a Loudoun County School Board member previously. Her name is Tiffany Polifko, and she joins us on the phone. Tiffany, good to have you with us.
Good afternoon, Vince. Thank you so much for having me on this afternoon. I appreciate your time.
Totally crazy when I'm listening to what is going on at the Loudoun County School Board. What is happening? What are these parents so concerned about? And why are they being shut up by the school board members?
Well, listen, first of all, this all goes back to poor leadership. Number one, the problem we have is parents are concerned about the safety and security of their children, as they should be. And if we had effective leadership on this school board, we would have some answers in front of us, maybe not particularly about the disciplinary action or personally identifiable information behind what was done for this student in terms of behavior, which I certainly understand, because as a previous school official, that is information that I was not able to divulge to the public. However, this student in particular has already been covered by the media. It's been in multiple outlets over the past several weeks. Loudoun Times Mirror published an article on these, on this occurrence. This was also reported by Nick Minock from WJLA. So the personally identifiable information that Chair Mansfield was trying to censor the public on last night is a flat-out poor excuse at best for trying to stop the public from making comments that, in my opinion, she and the rest of that board simply did not want to have to hear. And that is the biggest disgrace of all, Vince, is that you have parents coming out pouring their hearts out about their concern for the most important thing in their world, which is their children. This school board doesn't even have the decency to focus on really what should be in front of them, which is, please explain to the public, even if you're not doing it up on the dais in that moment, put out a statement, answer Nick Minock from WJLA when he asks you about how you feel about this situation. How about you justify and rationalize your reasons for either being satisfied with decisions that were made, or holding the administration accountable for the decisions that they, that were made, but no. Instead, they sit up there like a bunch of feckless cowards behind a resolution that will do absolutely nothing to quantifiably protect our students. This is a classic case of mowing the lawn while the house is on fire. It is utter insanity, Vince.
Okay, that resolution that you're referring to, is this the, is this the school board's plan on telling parents how to store their guns?
Yes, sir. It certainly is. And I know you covered this story with, with board member Dina Griffiths. And yes, they voted on a resolution to notify parents about the importance of safe gun storage. First of all, that's already a Virginia state law. Secondly, this is completely out of the purview of the school board. In my opinion, if you are a member of the school board and you're interested in gun legislation, and that's something that you want to hang your hat on, then you probably shouldn't be serving on the school board. You should be running to be a member of the House of Democrats, or maybe State Senate. That's where you need to go. And you know what, Vince? The bottom line is, this resolution, and among all these other proclamations that this board ridiculously pats themselves on the back for, is nothing more than an opportunity to pad their political resumes and talk about all of the, I'm making air quotes with my fingers right now, as Chris Plant would say, the things we got done on the school board. This is not getting anything done. It is tone deaf at best. And it reminds me an awful lot, last night, of the board meeting back in June of 2021, when public comment was shut down once again, because the public was coming out to speak of things that this board, or that was then that board, not the current board, but it's really, you know, one and the same at this point. They just didn't want to hear it. And I am convinced, Vince, that if Chair Mansfield had the opportunity to pen every single person's speech before they come up to the podium to talk at public comment, I'm convinced that she would do that. That's how badly she wants control. And the fact that none of those other board members had the courage or the spine to stand up for their constituents last night and disagree with her decision to end public comment is disgusting. They all could have said something they didn't, and they should have voted on it, and they didn't.
So I have a bunch of questions about this. One of them is, do any of these people who are trying to shut down parents, do they have children in Loudoun County Schools?
Some of them do, Vince, and some of them don't.
Some of them don't, okay. And then, and then families keep showing up with, with proper complaints, like, you know, hey, I'd like the MS-13 gang member not to be near my kid. I'd like some answers on what the hell's going on. And when they do that, you know, they're like yelling at these Loudoun County School Board members, which they deserve. Why do they do these jobs? Like, why is it, what excites them about being yelled at by the public for being incompetent?
Oh, Vince, believe me, they don't want to be yelled at by the public. And here's the thing. They, this is why they shut down the comments, Vince, because they can't take the heat. And if you cannot sit up there as somebody who is in a leadership role and listen to the voice of everyone, whether it's someone who has something nice to say or not, whether it's someone who has something pleasant to report on, or something inconvenient or unpleasant, it is your job as an elected official to listen to all of those individuals and to respond properly to them.
But what drives them, though? Why would Melinda Mansfield want to be a school board member? That's what I want to, that's basically the core question. Why is she even interested in this job? What is her goal?
Well, my prediction with anybody who puts themselves in a position like this is that, especially in Loudoun County, is that they crave power, especially if you're on the left. Because as we all know, it is a Dem-heavy district, Democrat-heavy district. They get in there, it's hive-minded, they all work together, and the odd man out gets excluded, right? The odd man out is, is sort of the pariah of the group, and it's a great stepping stone for the next, the next political adventure. This is where the board members have an opportunity to fail up. When they fail at their job as a board member, they then decide to run for higher office. And we've seen it happen before, happens repeatedly. I just can't, if you don't want to serve people, and you have such disdain for the public, Vince, as the majority of these board members do, that is, that is a fantastic question, and one that I'd like to learn more about psychologically and behaviorally. Why are you sitting up there when it is so painfully obvious that you do not care about the public, and you are putting the end users of this school system, which is children and family, at the back of the line? It is a total disgrace.
So we talked, when we talked to Dina Griffiths, like, current Loudoun County School Board member, again, one of the good ones, about all this, she got into some back and forth with some of these school board members recently over the fact that they took all sorts of donations from gun-grabbing groups, that they were taking massive amounts of money from these anti-gun organizations in order to become school board members. And so, I guess I have a couple of questions on this, but one of the basic ones is, why would any group that has anything to do with guns at all, either side of the issue, be donating to school board members? I don't understand that. And if they're so concerned with gun violence, why aren't they giving information to the parents about the kid who just threatened to kill one of his classmates with a gun?
Well, because, Vince, it doesn't look good. That's, it's all about optics. It's all about optics and political power with these people. Number one, Moms Demand Action. Yes, Moms Demand Action gave all kinds of money to the school board members who are championing this feckless resolution, by the way, which, and I, and I'll tell you, I'll make a note here, and I'll take it aside for a second, and say, do I support safe gun storage? Absolutely. Are my guns stored safely, Vince? Yes, they are, because I know it's law. Yes, they are, because I know it's law. I know that that's what I have to do as a responsible gun owner. But, but to go back to your initial question about why are these political committees donating to these board members? Why are they involved? Because it's all part of the big ball of wax of the Democrat hive, power and control. That's where it all boils down to. It's the money breeds power. The more money you have, the more likely you are to be able to run a successful campaign. We all know that people can't run campaigns without money. And, and as much as these board members would like to sit up there and stare you in the face and tell you that they're nonpartisan, school board is apolitical, absolutely it is not, and we know that it's not. And Moms Demand was there in force last night. They were there in force. In fact, there was one woman, Vince, who approached me as I walked out the door, and after this public comment was, after people were censored and public comment was ended. And she got up in my face and she said, you were rude. And I said, ma'am, I don't think you understand that I am not the one who ended public comment. It is your board members who are chipping away at your rights. They censored all of us, they disenfranchised you as well. I simply called them out for it, and I demanded that all of them take a vote on it and raise their hands. I wanted every single person up there to have to raise their hand and look at all of the constituents in the audience and tell them that they supported taking away their right to stand up and deliver their speaks, speeches at public comment last night. And it was just an absolute abomination, Vince.
You know, people should be rude to people who abuse this much power. You really should, because it's, it's just gotten completely out of control. The, what's going to happen next, Tiffany Poliffco, as with the Loudoun County School Board? Are they going to allow public comment ever again?
Oh, well, they, they certainly will. They'll pretend like this didn't happen. They'll, they'll circle around to the next board meeting, you know, in two weeks, and they'll, they'll, they'll feign ignorance and this will, you know, this never occurred, just like the last go-around. And, you know, but their, their big hope, of course, is that we all go away. And what I keep saying is, you can't go away because that's what they want. They don't, that's why they stopped filming public speakers. That's why they dehumanized all of us and took the cameras. Not only are the cameras not on our backs anymore, they're not even on us at all. So if people are viewing from home, they see a white screen with an LCPS logo on it. It's incrementalism. That's exactly what it is. It first will, will take the cameras away, then we'll take the time away, because now you get 60 seconds, if that. Even the last board would give public comment, you'd, you'd get maybe two minutes if there were, you know, if there was below a certain number of speakers. Last night, I think there were only 20 speakers, so, you know, heaven forbid they have to sit there for 20 whole minutes and listen to the public come and speak. I mean, but it is, it is incrementalism. They are going to do everything they can to try and push off the public. And that tells us, if anyone's paying attention, that they don't like the public. Why are they doing this? Because they don't like us. And why don't they give us more time? And why don't they put the cameras on our faces? Because they don't want to.
They want to crush your criticism. Yeah, big time. Tiffany Poliffco, thank you for continuing to stay on top of all of this and being a thorn in the side of the people who are not taking care of Loudoun County at all. Really appreciate your time today.
Thank you.
A joint statement from Superintendent Aaron Spence and Board Chairwoman Melinda Mansfield. And they insist, everything is fine, we just want to protect student privacy, there's lots of misinformation out there, the local media is lying about this, and, and your, your students are safe, we're constantly looking out for them. I'm telling you, I'm hearing from Loudoun County parents, I'm hearing from Loudoun County law enforcement, I'm hearing from everybody, there's a lot of concern about this, and this idea that, oh, everything's totally fine, please, please, and they shut down the ability of the public to speak. Let me take Arthur calling in from Leesburg now, line four. Arthur, good afternoon, sir. You're on the Vince Collin Show.
Well, thank you for taking my, my call, Vince. I was struck by the fact that Comrade Harris is out there talking about threat to democracy as opposed by, you know, President Trump.
Yeah.
And yet we see here a demonstration of exactly how the Democrats operate. And so if you want more of the same, just vote for Comrade Harris. This is the way communists operate. They can't, they can't, can't take public criticism because they would then have to admit they made a mistake.
Yes, they crush it. They don't respond, they don't try and make their case, they just wield their power to crush the critique. And we saw that happen in Loudoun County last night. Notice, they, they didn't offer meaningful responses, they didn't engage in a conversation, they just said, the public comment period is over, how dare you speak to us that way? I gave you two warnings. Do you hear that little tyrant? She should resign in disgrace. And I love, she calls herself Chair Mansfield. I'm the chair. What? You're the chairwoman. Use English.